They're not going to do that till I pound.
Right, because we switch right at the election, right? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January ninth, 2017, School Board meeting. All members are in attendance, please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, we will have election of officers. And first up will be election of the Chair. Would someone like to make a move to nominate someone?
Chair.
Yes.
I nominate Rick Oliva.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Any other nominations for Chair? Any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, all in favor of Rick Oliva for Chair, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None.
Any opposed in the room?
You've got your name plaque. Oh, yeah. You have to switch names. Thank you.
There you go.
And before we continue with the election of officers, I'd like to just take a moment to reflect on becoming School Board Chair. I am the son of a Cuban immigrant and a farm girl from South Dakota. And while I typically do not view myself in the context of race or ethnicity, I feel like I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the historical significance of this moment during our district's centennial year, and offer my gratitude to those who have worked and continue to work for racial equality in schools across this great nation. So, thank you very much. And with that being said, do we have a nomination for Vice Chair? Director Saiga.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Tom Bennett.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Congratulations, Mr. Bennett. No speech, and you don't even have to move, I don't think. And we'll keep going down the line. For Clerk, do we have a nomination for Clerk?
Chairman, I nominate Nellie Carmen for Clerk.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other? Seeing no other nominations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, congratulations to Nellie Carmen. And do we have any nominations for Treasurer?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Jim Storm for Treasurer.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Any others? And for good measure, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Alright, congratulations, Director Storm, on becoming Treasurer. And Deputy Clerk? We're not Deputy Clerk, do we? No, oh, we do?
Yes.
We do, okay. So, do we have a nomination for Deputy Clerk?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Rod Zifkovich.
Have a second? Okay, we have a nomination, a second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Rod. Is he here? No. Okay. Wonderful. And that moves us to item four on the agenda. The approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. And that moves us to item five, recognition of students, staff, and public. And first up, it looks like we have the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation. And the proclamation will be accepted by Human Rights Youth Commissioners Daniella Kunkel and Savannah Salado.
Evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members. I'm Savannah Salado, and this is Daniella Kunkel. We serve as the Youth Commissioners on the Bloomington Human Rights Commission. Today, we have the great honor of accepting the Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation on behalf of the Commission. Martin Luther King Junior's legacy secured progress on civil rights in the United States. In 1964, Reverend King received the Nobel Peace Prize for his work to end racial segregation and racial discrimination through nonviolent means and civil disobedience. We ask that all citizens of Bloomington take this time to reflect on the effect Martin Luther King Junior had on the progression of social equality through nonviolent means.
And I have a proclamation. Actually, we need someone to read the motion.
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation recognizing January sixteenth, 2017, as Martin Luther King Junior Day.
And we have a second. And here is the proclamation, it says, "Whereas the Bloomington Public Schools join our nation in recognizing January sixteenth, 2017, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and whereas Bloomington recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Junior's life and work reflected the importance of making America a place where equality and justice, freedom, and peace could grow and flourish. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomington Board of Education, Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim January sixteenth, 2017, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and asks all citizens of Bloomington to remember and reflect on the principles of racial equality and nonviolent social change espoused by Martin Luther King Junior, and to rededicate themselves to the philosophy that we can all share the dream for a better life, not only in Bloomington, but also in the world." Do we have any further discussion? No? All those in favor of this proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? The proclamation carries. And I'll present this to you. Ready? Free? Okay. That brings us down to our friend for this evening. The school district is fortunate to have businesses and organizations supporting our learners and the community of Bloomington. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the School Board recognizes our friends of education. We welcome Dr. Dave Heistit, Executive Director of Research, Evaluation, and Testing, to do the introduction of our friend for this evening, the Center of Applied Research and Educational Improvement. So, Dr. Heistit?
Thank you, Chairman Oliva, and Board members, Superintendent Fujitaki. It's my great pleasure to introduce tonight Dr. Ted Christ, who is the Director of the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. People usually call it C.A.R.E.I., at the University of Minnesota. He's also an Associate Professor with a distinguished career for such a young guy in the areas of formative assessment and multi-tiered systems of support. Ted has published significantly in journals and books. He's the author of a formative assessment, which is called Formative Assessment System for Teachers, usually referred to as FAST. And his work is widely known throughout the United States. Bloomington has collaborated with C.A.R.E.I. for many years now. Some of the most recent stuff that we're working on relates to the Innovation Zone, which is part of the Board's platform, and also work on the State Longitudinal Education Data System. But I'll turn it over to Ted, so he can tell us a little bit more about C.A.R.E.I. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. So, I stepped in as Director of what we like to call the New C.A.R.E.I. It's been around for 25 years. And when I did before folks at the university started to figure out what the solutions to the state's problems were, we figured it would be a good idea to ask folks who were working in schools and practicing as educators. So, as we tried to identify what are the challenges in the states, and what are the challenges in the state of Minnesota, and what are the possible solutions to those challenges, Jim Engelmeyer and Dave were two of the first folks that we tapped, because we identified them as some of the foremost experts in the state. And they provided us critical input as to how the university, and how a center at the university, might skillfully bridge the divide between who are some of the international experts in the area of education and leadership and systems change at the university who communicate so infrequently and so poorly with the rest of the state, and help us conceptualize how the university can work with practitioners, so that we can find common ground and try to identify some of the more pervasive common solutions for the state. And I'm pleased to say that we had a bill last year to establish a statewide technical assistance center, and we did receive, we were able to testify, and we're going back this year. And we are hopeful that before this next session is out, that there will be a statewide technical assistance center that bridges the Minnesota Department of Education, the University of Minnesota, and local educational agencies from across the state. So, thank you for having me here today. And if you're interested, we have a website, Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement, or C.A.R.E.I. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll include C.A.R.E.I. on our Friends Wall, and proudly we'll be reporting back to you on our collaborative work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the next item, Minnesota State DECA President. Danny Boy, Jefferson High, from Jefferson High School, has been selected as the new President of Minnesota State DECA, and I'll ask Eric Wrestler, a Jefferson teacher, to introduce and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I am Eric Wrestler. I'm the Business Education Teacher and DECA Advisor at Jefferson High School. And I get the wonderful opportunity to introduce to you guys Danny Boy. He is a DECA member from Jefferson, who ran for the state office this year and was elected President of Minnesota DECA. So, I'll let him explain what his role is and what DECA is for you. Congratulations, Danny.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wrestler, and to members of the Board for having me here today. For those of you that don't know, DECA is a competitive business and marketing club in high schools and colleges nationwide, and it prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in fields of marketing, finance, hospitality, and tourism, as well as management. And so far, since November, I've had the amazing opportunity to work with state advisors and mentors on how to prepare for the State Career Development Conference in March, which is our big competition that we are really tasked with running. And it's been an amazing opportunity to represent Jefferson on such a state level. So, Board Director Oliva and Superintendent Fujitaki and Board members, thank you for having me here today.
Thank you. And I do have a certificate here on behalf of the School Board. Moving right along, we get to our TIES Exceptional Teachers Awards. And so, it looks like this evening we will be honoring two teachers. And our first call upon Holly Skadsum to introduce Stephanie McPhail.
Or Matt. Looks like.
Not Holly. I'm going to jump the line a little bit. Alright. Board Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members. Each year, we honor two TIES Exceptional Teachers of the Year for their great work in integrating technology into the classroom. Stephanie McPhail and Scott Kader were honored at the December TIES Education Conference. I'm going to read a little bit about Scott, oh, and I'm here with Holly Skadsum, as you said, Digital Learning Coordinator. I'm going to read a little bit about Scott's classroom, and then allow him to say a few words if he'd like. Scott Kader has taught mathematics for the Bloomington Public Schools since 1995. In collaboration with his Algebra II team, Scott ventured into blended learning and regularly provided his students with the opportunity to move at their own pace while providing targeted instruction to the students that need it most. Scott has been working to perfect the design of his team's self-paced Moodle course through the process of constant experimentation and rapid iteration. Scott encourages his students to own a growth mindset, often helping them to navigate conversations about their own learning. His use of advanced Moodle plugins and the creation of standards-aligned content provides him and his team with the opportunity to provide personalized instruction to each student. He continues to lead other teachers toward blended learning methods that support student's success. For these reasons and many more, Scott Kader is an exceptional teacher. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, I guess I just want to take a minute to just thank the Jefferson Math Department as a whole, because our department is a very cohesive group, and they've allowed me to have a schedule where I'm focusing on Algebra II, and I can play around with the next new greatest thing to try. So, that's been fantastic at Jefferson. And then, within our department, there's two other special gentlemen that we have been able to pull this project off with, and that's John Anderson and Ryan Myring, because there's no way that I could have done this myself. Yes, I'll receive the award on their behalf or our PLC's group, but what we're doing takes more than just one. So, we're a strong team, and I guess that's why I'm here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now, Holly.
This is Stephanie McPhail. She's a fifth-grade teacher at Washburn Elementary School. Three years ago, in her first year of teaching, Steph flipped her math classroom to give her students control over the time and pace in which they learned. Since then, she has joined the district's flexible learning cohort to explore blended learning models to implement in her classroom. Additionally, she participated in a fifth-grade cohort that developed and is currently implementing a self-paced mastery-based math program in which students have complete control over the time, place, path, and pace of their learning. Steph is always willing to try something new and is constantly iterating with technology in her classroom. Over the summer, Steph volunteered to teach summer tech sessions, where her enthusiasm and passion for technology led other teachers to adopt new practices. In addition, her role as Curriculum Technology Leader in her building has made her a go-to person when staff need assistance. These reasons and so many more make Steph an exceptional teacher.
I didn't have anything prepared tonight, so I'll make this short. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to thank the school district for trusting in their teachers to take on their own curriculum. It's been great to be a part of the flexible cohort for the past three years since I've started here, and it's been great to see how much it's grown as a program. And then, thank you also to the district for giving teachers resources to help students reach their best potential, and then giving the teachers resources to kind of just re-energize our curriculum as we go along through professional development. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have the Middle School Art Teachers Holiday Card Project. And it looks like we'll have Ann Gerton from Olson Middle School come up, if you'd like to say a few words. And on behalf of the School Board, we wish to thank the following art teachers and their students for providing original pieces of artwork for the 2016 holiday cards sent out by School Board members and the superintendent, and they should start showing up here on the screen. Megan Lagering, Gabriel Erickson, and Deb Lipinski, and have a few words that you'd like to say.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Again, I couldn't do it without a group of teachers. We had the opportunity this year to have middle school students, grade six through eight, create holiday cards to be distributed to Bloomington School District's business partners. And it was really a fun experiment for us to allow kids to express themselves using what they've learned in the past through the elementary program and what they've learned in the middle school. It was a chance for them to express themselves in their own style. And especially the sixth graders were so excited. I mean, they even thought there was going to be this big art show. And they said, "Well, we aren't going to have an art show, but we are going to take it to the next level, and we're going to photograph your work. We're going to put it on our school announcements." And that also encouraged somebody else, Carolyn Garrus, who works at Olson Middle School in our Technology Department, to create a YouTube video. It was a slideshow presentation of all of the cards. So, some students will be adding this to their art portfolio. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us now to public recognition. And I do have a list. I'll call, I'll say, is there anyone who wishes to address the School Board on an item that is not on the agenda? And I do have a list of names here. There's about eight people on this list, so I'll call them first, and then at the end, if there's others that would like to address the Board, we can do that. Since there's so many, if you could keep it to maybe two or three minutes a person, that would be wonderful. The first name on the list I have is Tom Palava.
Thank you, Chairman Oliva and Superintendent Fujitaki and the Board for letting me come up here. We have some concerns we'd like the School Board to kind of look into. I guess some of the, we feel, our family, that some of the school teachers are overusing their power of mandated reporters, and kind of using it to pick on families and stuff. We had a situation where my mother-in-law and my wife's mother passed away this year, and my daughter lost a lot of school time because of that. And child protection was called before the day that my mother-in-law died. Child protection was called on me and my wife for neglect of our child by the school. There were some attendance issues, but we found out later that this was not part of the attendance issues. It happened before that. My daughter had lost a lot of school because of that. There were things in the allegations that were untrue about what she was eating for lunch. It was stated that there were chips and cookies in there. They did not mention that there was a sandwich in there that she liked, her favorite kind, a cheese sandwich, applesauce and a cheese stick. There was also an allegation that she pulled away from me at the school. Yeah, she did pull away from me because she didn't want to be at, she didn't want to go to the hospital. She was having fun at school. She was enjoying school at the time. And we thought it would be best that she be there the day before, because we were told that the mother-in-law, my mother-in-law, would pass at any time. So, when we found that out, we thought it'd be important, seeing Ari's been part of, her grandma's been a big part of her life. She's lived with us, and we've taken care of her mother, and that's my mother-in-law, and stuff. And Ari, Ari's been around her every day. So, when I got that information, it hurt us after we got this phone call and stuff. It just, you know, she had missed some other school because she had croup and stuff like that. And we were working as a team, supposedly with the principal there and some of the other special ed and the teachers. She was being tested for Asperger's. She does have severe asthma, and she has sleep apnea. So, some nights, she gets a bad night's sleep and wasn't able to make it to school sometimes. The day I had a conversation with Mr. Fujitaki, I also got a call from Child Protection again, saying we're not taking care of our child by not getting her to school. It was the same day I talked to the principal at her school. Stuff seemed to be getting better. We decided not to, we didn't know who to trust at the school anymore. So, we chose to take our daughter out of the school. We have now since put her in another school, which she doesn't really like being there. She misses her friends at her old school and stuff. She's basically being bullied out of a school by the administrative staff there. And I've also had another daughter that attended Bloomington Schools that was bullied out of schools by students. We just want somebody to look into this. I've talked with Mr. Fujitaki. I've sat down with him and stuff, and he's still looking into some of this stuff. But I'd like the Board to look at maybe having another tier before child protection is called, and have that person that thinks something's going on, report to that person, and maybe sit down and figure out what's going on, not to use it as a retaliation for something, and which it looks like was in this case with the original call. Our daughter had a tough time going to preschool with separation anxiety. Her mom had to stay there until we finally got her to like school towards the end, and now it's all been ruined. She's afraid to go to school. She's afraid to leave her mom now because of all of this. I also want to add one other thing. The day before my mother-in-law passed away, the school, the teacher, told me she would have counselors there to talk to her the very next day, while she passed away on a Friday. Monday came around, she was at school that whole week. Nobody talked to her, no counselor, no nothing. The school has let us down. I've been, I graduated 1990 from Kennedy High School. My wife, 91, Kennedy High School. My parents graduated from Kennedy High School. My aunts and uncles have worked for Kennedy High, or for Bloomington Schools. I feel very let down by Bloomington Schools, same with my wife right now. We'd like somebody to look into some of this stuff that I've talked about, because it is happening in the schools. It's very sad. I spent a lot of time in this school here. I spent a lot of time in this school here and over at Kennedy. And I chose to have our daughters go to school here in Bloomington. I lived in Eagan. They moved to Eagan. I was a 17-year employee with the city of Eagan with the fire department. I took a leave from there, came here to, so our kids could go to Bloomington Schools. That's how much we cared about Bloomington Schools because we thought they were good. Now, I don't know what to think anymore. Trying to get a kindergartner to go to school and stuff because now this has happened. She's pulled out of class. She didn't know why and stuff like that. For a kindergarten, kindergartner to go through that and the death of her grandma and stuff like that and have no support from the school, that's not right. And to have teachers say something that they're going to do and not fulfill it, and administrative staff say they're going to do something and not fulfill it, is not right with me. That's all I have. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for addressing the board. We typically don't respond. We'll follow up with the administration. Thank you. Before you come up, I'm just going to read first names, so I apologize. I have on this list Tim Bridgett, Don, Katie, Rachel, Jackie, and Gay. Is that all of you? And are you all together? Then it doesn't matter what order you come up in. So, come on up in whatever order it is you would like. I won't call you individually.
Good evening Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, those of you in the audience and at home. My name is Tim Suzuki, and I've been a Bloomington teacher for 12 years. Currently, I'm in my first year as a QCOM peer coach, but prior to this role, I spent 11 years teaching first grade over at Washburn Elementary. I'm here tonight to talk about my passion toward early childhood education. My wife has been teaching pre-K for nine years, and I have a rambunctiously spirited two-year-old named Kira and a four-year-old named Joella that has turned our home into a classroom. So, you could say I'm very much living the pre-K life right now. Our home is filled with small successes every single day, and those small successes are a big deal. Pre-K in Bloomington is a big deal. As a coach, I was happy to discover that I was assigned Southwood and Pond to my roster. At those sites, I've seen amazing early childhood teachers do amazing things with young learners at such a crucial time in their development. Those teachers lesson plan, individualize learning for whole groups of diverse needs. They reflect and show commitment to student growth and their own personal growth as well. They're constantly keeping the whole child in mind with activities that are purposeful and engaging. Above all, they set the tone for what it's like to be a Bloomington learner academically, socially, and emotionally. At Washburn in particular, I saw firsthand the impact of high-quality pre-K educators could have on the school community. Families felt the pride in being a part of something special. They trusted in the teachers and the system and knew that they were advocated for here in Bloomington. It made the transition for those four-year-olds easier as well. They learned the building and saw the smiling faces of teachers, students, and support staff every single day. Their confidence grew. Primary teachers were able to collaborate in new ways, which immensely benefited students' growth. There was an increase in parent involvement, and the feeling of pride started to develop at Washburn. The loving nature of the pre-K teachers was evident and somewhat expected in their students, from their students. But what I hadn't anticipated was how it was infectious with the entire school community as well. I saw older students looking after and taking pride in seeing their pre-K students down the halls and around the building. Former and current students would glow with pride and bring their pre-K siblings down to my classroom to meet me. It didn't take long before those same little ones would walk down by themselves to say hello. My first graders relished in the opportunity to be role models with them. They belonged, and they helped to create a special environment at Washburn. Most importantly, I would see those same young students return as kindergartners with confidence and then come to me as first graders, not only confident, but academically prepared as well. What a testament to those teachers. They're kind of a big deal. The pre-K teachers in Bloomington do amazing things, and it's not by accident. It's a result of dedication to their craft, to their students and the families that they serve. That's how you get families to stay committed to Bloomington Public Schools. You give their children a great start with great teachers. It's time they are recognized and respected for the work that they do by being a part of the Bloomington Public School K-12 contract. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Mr. Fujitaki. My name is Don Germainz. This is my 13th year here in Bloomington. I was at Washburn Elementary for 10 years in many roles, fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, and K-5 science. And I'm currently in my third year as a QCOM peer coach. I'm honored and humbled for two reasons to be here and speaking. And secondly, that my fellow faculty asked me to support and speak on their behalf as their peer coach. As you well know, as part of the QCOM process and teacher development and evaluation, pre-K teachers do the same thing as K-5 teachers. Just a couple of responsibilities that they have, and they participate with me. We have our fall planning conference to kick off the year with their PLC. They're required for PLC participation in their goal development action plan, setting norms for their PLC, having a SMART goal for their PLC based on student achievement. They also have individual student achievement goals for their own classroom. They also participate in their site goals district-wide. And participation-wise, they also participate a minimum of 1,200 minutes for the year in their PLC. Also, they're responsible for sharing their student data from their classroom with their PLC, as well as bringing in a strategy or research-based strategy that they have tried in their own classroom and then bring it back and bring the results of their students to their PLC and to share that strategy. And then they also have to try a strategy that another PLC member has implemented in their own classroom. And like I said, their, their goals are based on student, on student achievement and student data. They're responsible for three observations throughout the year, and they also participate in the high-cycle process, which by law, every three years, they are evaluated by an administrator. And also, at the end of the year, they do participate in a summative conference with their peer coach. And, you know, based in what happens, we look at their PLC document and review their PLC goal if they've met it, if they've met the participation requirements in minutes, sharing of student data, and strategies. And also, look at their building, or their site goal, and also their individual goals. And based on that, that data, they get compensated accordingly.
Hi, my name is Bridget Schwant, and I am a preschool teacher at Southwood Early Learning Center through Pond. Tonight, we want to talk about responsibilities or work for comparison between pre-K and
Let me just speak into the mic as well. K-5 teacher responsibilities. Bachelor's or master's degree plus a Minnesota teaching license.
Pre-K teacher responsibilities. Bachelor or master's degree plus a Minnesota teaching license.
PLC and QCOM requirements.
PLC and QCOM requirements.
Professional development days.
Professional development days.
Individual student support team.
Individual student support team.
Lesson plans incorporating state standards.
Lesson plans incorporating state standards.
Units of study for English language arts.
Units of study for language and literacy and social emotional.
Next technology for learning.
Next technology for learning.
RTI, MTSS, Response to Intervention Multi-Tier Systems of Supports.
RTI, MTSS, Response to Intervention Multi-Tier System of Supports.
Team meetings and staff meetings.
Team meetings and staff meetings.
IEP meetings and paperwork for ECSE students and meetings with special ed staff.
IEP meetings and paperwork for ECSE students and meetings with special ed staff.
Conferences for an average of 24 students twice a year.
Conferences for 30 or more students twice a year.
Assessments for an average of 24 students, data entry and data days.
Assessments for 30 or more students three times a year.
Report cards for an average of 24 students two times a year.
Sorry, I misread that. Report cards for 30 or more students three times a year.
Communication with families.
Communication with families.
Prep work.
Prep work.
Part of the district instructional committee, math review committee, program leadership team, learning supports team, building instructional team, district diversity advisory council, and et cetera.
Part of a district instructional committee, math review committee, program leadership team, learning supports team, program instructional team, district diversity advisory council, et cetera.
K-5 teachers are on the K-12 contract.
No, not on, we are not on the K-12 teacher contract.
Good evening. My name is Katie Peterson, and I teach preschool at Valley View Elementary. According to the Pathways to Graduation poster, early childhood is where it all begins. As many of you have heard, as many of you have had your children attend our preschools, you already know that we have high-quality preschools taught by licensed teachers, many having their master's degrees. In our preschools, we get students academically ready for kindergarten by working on our letters, shapes, colors, numbers, rhyming, and alliteration, to name a few skills. We also get our students socially ready for kindergarten by working on how we sit quietly when the teacher is talking, how we raise our hand if we want to say something, how we interact with everyone at school, and how we treat everyone at school. In our preschools, we also get the parents ready for their school, for their child schooling career. We help get paperwork filled out. We explain to teacher or to parents that they need to sign up for conferences twice a year and why it is important for them to attend. We expose them to report cards and explain what report cards mean and how to read them. We encourage our parents to be involved with their child schooling by providing our families Learning Together Days, where parents come to school with their children. When at school, parents are able to complete activities with their children and get ideas of what activities or games they can do at home with their child to help get them ready for school. Parents are also able to attend parent education classes where the topics are geared towards getting your children socially and academically ready for kindergarten. Through all of these ways, we are working to close the achievement gap while getting both students and parents ready for a schooling career. When working in our preschool classrooms, we are the ones responsible for implementing RTI or MTSS interventions. We are the ones who are responsible for providing EL support for the students who need it. We are the ones responsible for handling children's challenging behavior. We are the ones responsible for making ECSE referrals and attending all meetings for that child. We are the ones responsible for communicating with parents. We are the ones responsible for everything in the classroom. We have no extra supports available to us. This year, many of our preschool teachers are co-teaching with a special education teacher. These teachers have the same level of education and licenses that we have, but they are on the K-12 contract. In the classroom, we are the ones that do most of the planning and prep work for the co-taught class. We complete report cards on all of the students, conference all of the students, and attend IEP meetings. It is really difficult working in a situation where you are supposed to be a team with the same end goal in mind of preparing these children for kindergarten, but one member of the team gets paid significantly more than the other team member. The team doesn't really feel like equals working together. We would really appreciate everyone considering putting us on the Bloomington K-12 contract after the loss of the Richfield Early Childhood Program that leaves 14 preschool teachers left at this time. You have acknowledged that early childhood plays an important role in the education framework by including us on the Pathways to Graduation, and you have also seen that we are licensed teachers and do the same work that other Bloomington teachers do. Preschool is where it all begins for the students and the parents. We would like you to invest in your Early Learning Services program and in your preschool teachers and put us on the K-12 contract so you, so we can be a respected and valued member of the Bloomington Public Schools Pathways to Graduation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments this evening. As I mentioned earlier, we don't typically respond at the board meetings, but we'll follow up with administration as appropriate. Thank you. And, I lost the sheet. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school board on an item not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one come forward, we will move to our next item, which I believe, I have something to read here about the students coming for their government class, and I can't find it. Here we go. Government classes at school board meetings. A requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend, our city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. Are there any students here for their government class? All right. So, if you could come up to the podium and please state your name and the name of your teacher, that would be great. And then, at the close of the session or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the agenda from any one of our administrative cabinet members sitting over here on the side, and you are free to stay until the end.
My name is Jackie Garretson, and I go to Jefferson High School, and I have Paul Garlock.
Thank you. All right. Now, I believe that brings us to section six. Our A agenda, board meetings and study sessions. So, we have our part A agenda. Were we gonna, hold on, let's see. We needed to step through this one this time though, didn't we? Okay. So, typically, we can just go ahead and approve part A, all as one, but this evening, we are not going to do that because we have our organizational matters to attend to. So, is there someone who can, who'd like to move part A, which states where the meetings will be held? The dates and times will be the second and fourth Mondays of each month with the school board meeting beginning at 7:00. If it's on a holiday, the board meeting will be on Tuesday. The third Monday of each month is reserved, if needed, for study sessions. We'll follow parliamentary rules of procedure, Robert's Rules of Order, and the operation of the school board is provided in Policy 203, board sessions. Can I get that motion to approve section A?
Your chair?
Yes.
If I may, if it meets with your approval, it may go a little quicker if we make a motion for letters A through H at least, and we approve those all at once, then there may, you may wish to want to share.
Okay, so A through H would be board meetings and study sessions, business functions, signatures on checks, signatures on contracts, school board attorney, insurance agent, architectural services, and the construction manager. Do I have a motion for, or is that your motion?
Yeah, that's my, my motion.
Second.
You do have to add the names and the checks.
We do have to, okay. See, this is why I was trying to go slow here. So, on part C, signatures on checks. Okay, how about this? Could we revise that? And I would like to have a motion to approve items A and B.
Sure. We can, I'll second that revision.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving A and B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Okay. Now, can someone read that resolution on letter C, please, and insert the names?
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the school board authorizes the use of facsimile signatures of the chair, clerk, and treasurer on all checks drawn on the payroll and operating accounts, and that said names are as follows. Chair, Rick Oliva. Clerk, Nellie Corman. And Treasurer, Jim Soren.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor of letter C, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And it carries unanimously. Okay. Now, if you'd like to continue D through H, if you'd like to make that motion? Anybody?
Sure. I'd like to move approval of letters D through H as one.
Include signatures on contracts, school board attorney, insurance agent, architectural services, and construction manager. Is there any discussion?
Second.
Oh, second? Is there any discussion on letters D through H? See, I'm getting ahead of myself already. Any discussion? No? All those in favor of D through H, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And, let's see here. I think we were going to do I and J separately also. So, if someone could move letter I?
Mr. Chairman, I move the acceptance of letter I, which is stated in our agenda that the school board confirms the appointments of various individuals of the board. the school board confirms the appointments of various individuals of the board to the associations, agencies, and meetings, delegate assemblies, and so forth like that. There's six items listed.
Sure, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made and there's a second, is there any discussion on letter I? That looks good. All those in favor of letter I, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. And letter J, can someone move letter J?
Mr. Chair, be resolved the school board of independent school district 271 approves compensation for school board members at the rate of $600 per month for 2017. No change in compensation amount since 2005.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion on this one? All those in favor of letter J, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No? Okay, motion carries. All right, this brings us to number eight. Here's our part A agenda, this is our...
Seven.
Did I miss something?
No, number seven.
Number seven? Oh, yeah, I forgot my roman numerals. I promise, I did go to school, I'm just, you know, I had my eye doctor appointment today and maybe my eyes are still blurry, I apologize. So, number seven is our part A agenda, which includes board business, grants, contracts, and agreements. Can I get someone, a motion to approve part A?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving part A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None, and part A carries. All right, that brings us to eight. Part B of our agenda, and up first is approval and ratification of the 2015-2017 negotiated contract between Independent School District 271 and the Custodial Maintenance and Transportation Employees SEIU Local Number 284. We'll have Mary Burrows come up and present. Does someone want to read this resolution?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Brooks?
Be resolved the school board of independent school district number 271, approve and ratify the 2015-2017 negotiated contract between the school district and the custodial maintenance and transportation employees SEIU Local 284.
And a second? I'll turn it over to you.
Chair Oliva, superintendent for Taki and members of the board. I'm pleased to come before you with three contracts actually tonight, so this will be the first of three that are coming. This is with our custodial maintenance and transportation. The tentative agreement included salary schedule improvements of 1.5% for 1516 and 1.5% for 1617. In addition, other notable changes in the contract, there was an increase to Schedule C of 1.5%, which is where their stipends and extra duty pay lies. We did do an addition of non-mechanical callback stipend. We also updated previously agreed to out-of-network, out-of-pocket maximums for health insurance, and also increases to the district health insurance contribution and HSA contribution both years of the contract. There were other changes to language, but I know those were sent out so that you could review on the, on the contract, and other housekeeping changes. With that, I would recommend that you ratify the agreement.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair? First, I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work, energy and effort that went into this contract as it has gone into all of them. This just happens to be the negotiating unit, the bargaining unit that I've sat on for the last five years, so I've gotten very familiar with all the people at the table. I appreciate the, the tone and tenor of their conversation. It's, it at times can, can be not so easy and not so fun, but for the most part, everybody was, everybody did their, did their job and was very well behaved. I'd like to point that out because it takes a robust conversation. We don't always have an opportunity to get these things done in one, one meeting. There were a number of meetings that came to this, this particular contract, so. That said, I know you're not asking for votes now, but I may as well declare mine. I did vote no on the teacher contract, I voted no on the, on the financial component only. I wish I could separate different components and say yes to this, no to that. I'm not allowed to do that, I can't do that, and so in order to stay consistent in my voting, I'm gonna have to vote no on this particular contract, and so everyone understands I'm voting no on the financial component only. It exceeds the 1% of the budget that we approved way back when we approved the budget, and I'm sticking to that particular one, so, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, could you just talk briefly about the addition of MOU regarding Good Friday?
There's, we're researching the language on the Good Friday, public funds, religious holidays, and potential discrimination issues, so.
So...
There's an MOU that's put in place that if we determine that it's not okay, that we will adapt the language.
So there's no changes currently?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any further discussion? And for these, we have to do roll call, correct? So we'll start on this side?
Yes.
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 No.
So it's six to one, it passes, and that brings us to number two, approval and ratification of the 2015-17 master contract between Independent School District 271 Bloomington, Minnesota, and Association of Bloomington Clerical.
Okay, would you like to come up?
Chair?
Sure.
No? Be it resolved?
Go ahead and come up.
Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district number 271 approve and ratify the 2015-17 master contract between Independent School District 271 Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Association of Bloomington Clerical.
Second. There's three of them, I guess you just pick? So, if you'd like to introduce, and, and say a few words?
I will let people introduce themselves, but this is the team that we worked with during negotiations, and we held three sessions, and it was done very professionally and very constructively. And I know the district, I know Rod, if he were here, would say the same thing. We really appreciated the, the work that we did. As Dick pointed out, this was a tough negotiation season, and it was, it was good work that everyone did, so I'll let them introduce themselves.
Mary Lynda Bork, president of the clerical support staff unit.
I'm Sadie Martin, one of the attorneys for the association, and...
Joel Button, one of the attorneys.
And, and I think we, we also want to say that we really appreciated the negotiators for the district at the table, particularly Mary, who, who we dealt with. It's not, as she said, it's not been an easy year. Getting a contract in these circumstances isn't, you know, fun, but it's really helpful when you can keep the problems on the table, the table, and they were, we really appreciated the work they did and the atmosphere that, that we had in our bargaining.
Is there any, do you have anything else to add? I thought I heard something. No? Does anybody have any questions or comments, any discussion? Okay, so I guess being fair, we'll start on this side.
As I mentioned before, my vote is based purely on the financial component, and based on that, I'm voting no.
Yes.
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 Contract approved, six yes, one no. Thank you for being here, and that brings us to number three, approval and ratification of the 2015-17 master contract between Independent School District 271 Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Federation of Paraprofessionals. And we once again call on HR Director Mary Burrows.
Okay, similarly, this contract was ratified and met board parameter. Basically, the tentative agreement included wage schedule improvements of 1.95% to schedule, excluding longevity, didn't change, for 2015-2016, and 1.6% to schedule excluding longevity for 2016-2017. Restructuring occurred of the salary schedule in this contract that allowed us to place, you look at the percentage, you're going, man, that's more than other units got. We restructured the salary schedule, which allowed them to place a different percentage to their schedule, so that's what occurred. It also included previously agreed to out-of-network pocket maximums for health insurance, and also increasing the district health insurance contribution and HSA contribution both years of the contract. And with that, I would agree, recommend ratifying.
And we first need a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair? Be resolved the school board of independent school district number 271 approve and ratify the 2015-2017 master contract between Independent School District 271 Bloomington, Minnesota, and the Federation of Paraprofessionals.
Second.
And a second? Is there any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chair? Just quickly, I, I, I want to make sure that everybody understands that I'm, I'm very appreciative of the conversation that happens at the, at the negotiating table. As the previous members that were up here mentioned, it's, it needs to be an adult conversation, and it's tough at times when you, when, when you're not, not always hearing what you want to hear at the table, but I really do appreciate that conversation, so I don't think I can say that enough. Thank you.
Start over here?
Yes.
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 No.
Here's six to one. Thank you very much for all of your hard work. And that brings us down to number four, board goals 2016-2017 mid-year progress report. And I suppose, I'm probably supposed to read that one here, if I can find it. I lost it, okay.
You're welcome to mine if you'd like.
Well, isn't it in the board packet? Oh, here we go. Ah, you know what happens, is in Google Docs, 10 is actually like alphabetized 1, 0, and not 10, so it was at the top instead of at the bottom. Okay, so, we have in our board packet, board goals for 2016-17, we had listed five, six of them. Updating a long-range financial plan that includes an operating referendum plan, right thing, the budget three plan. Evaluate 2016-17 milestone vision metrics. Review and update if needed 20 policies, review core values of the district. Update board student advisory council program and collaborate, or celebrate Centennial Year of Bloomington Public Schools. Is there any conversation?
Well, do we want to go over the results of our...
Sure. We can do that, if you'd like to go over the results. Would you like to read those? Would you like me to read those?
Sure, I think you might be getting sick of reading things.
Hey, you don't have to.
We got a whole year of reading stuff.
It's a new, it's a new job, I'm still, you know, getting my feet wet here.
Okay, so the, the goal one, the update on a, a long-range financial plan, our results, we've agreed to explore options. Board action was on December 12, 2016. Our target amount will be set on January 23, and then adopt recommendations will be in February. Our second goal was to evaluate 2016-17 milestone vision metrics, and we had, administration presented those metrics at a retreat in August, and we also had the World's Best Workforce Annual Public Meeting. The review and update 20 policies, our policy committee thus far has taken action on eight, or have passed eight policies, and we are in good pace to meet that goal. Number four, review district core values of the district, and those were reviewed at a retreat in August. And then number five, the update board student advisory council program, which has been a huge makeover this year, a lot with the, the chair of the student, or student advisory committee, which is Rick Oliva and myself and Dick Brooks from around that, and we've started the high school, school board representatives, and we've given a lot more ownership of that committee to the students, and they've done a really good job so far with that. So that's something that I think the three of us are really pleased on the progress that we've made in that committee. And our sixth goal was to celebrate Centennial Year of Bloomington Public Schools, and the work is in progress, in progress with district staff and, and EFE, which will be a May 19, 2017 celebration date. Want to add anything to that?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just want to add the, the component for the student school board rep. You may notice that although I have a young man sitting next to me, he's, he's not in high school. Our student school board reps, we ask them to come to the second board meeting each, each month. So this first one is, is optional, we understand that they, obviously they have schoolwork, we want to make sure that they keep their mind focused on schoolwork, but you, you, you can, you should expect to see them here at the second meeting. And so Ally sits next to me, and Ethan, Ethan, I wanted to say, will sit over on, on that side of the board table. So if you wanted to meet those board, the student board reps, come to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'd just say I'm, I'm happy with the progress we've made, especially with the school student board reps, that's something I know, we had, we had talked about, especially Director or Vice Chair Bennett and I, since we were elected, is how to get more student involvement, and not just more student involvement, but more meaningful student involvement. You know, there's a difference between, I mean, look, if they didn't plan Sadie Hawkins' Dance, there probably would be no Sadie Hawkins' Dance, but that's a different level of involvement than saying, than meeting with our curriculum committee and our curriculum advisor and saying, this is how your decisions affect us, and, and discussing meaningful, having meaningful conversations about class size and schoolwork and curriculum options. And so that was sort of what we were trying to get at with that. So that one has sort of been a pet project of mine for the past three years, and really pleased to see that we have taken action, significant action on that one. Also, the policy committee has done, I think, a lot of work at revising and looking at the policies, some of which hadn't been looked at for quite some time.
Twenty years, something like that.
Well, I didn't want to say a number, because, you know, some people were here 20 years ago when they were made, but, you know, I don't want to point any fingers.
It was good then.
It was good then, yeah, might even have to look at it again, right? Is there any other further discussion on this document?
Mr. Chair, just real quickly, just want to say that I appreciate the fact that we have board goals, that we're working on, that we have a conversation about what we as a board, as a team, should do. I think this, this is, it's, it's critical to the success, our success, and certainly the district's success, but I, I really appreciate having goals.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on to board member reports, who would like to go first?
So last week, the calendar committee met, and we received our feedback from all of the schools on the different calendar options that they were given, and the majority of the, the teachers were favoring one contract and, oh, not contract, the schedule, I should say.
Calendar.
Calendar, that's it. So, yeah, I don't want to get confused there. So we took the, the different feedback and advisement, and we've coming up with a, a calendar that hopefully we'll be able to vote on at the next meeting. And then the calendar committee will be getting together again in February to do the, to start the process of doing the 18, 19 school year calendar. And also this coming Friday, there's another movie night at, at the Pond Early Childhood Center, and I think they're showing Wonderful Life of Pets, which is a wonderful movie if you guys haven't seen it, so. These are always great, great events that our, our schools do, especially in the winter, and it's free activity to get your kids out of the house and, and go and watch a movie and have some, you know, popcorn and pizza and drinks and all that stuff.
What day is it?
Friday.
Friday, okay.
And that concludes my report.
Who would like to go next?
Chair?
Director Berksen?
Okay, had the opportunity to attend a Nordic ski race up at Elm Creek. For those of you that don't know, the Kennedy and Jefferson combined their teams so that we can have a, a full team. It was up at Elm Creek, it was the last week, the, the air temperature was four below, and I won't mention what the wind chill was, but if you're dressed right, it's, it's okay to be outside. I just want to say thank you to the coaches that make that happen, that coordinate that. There was another meet this evening, and they ran into some slow driving because of the inch of snow that we just had. But it's really fun to see these kids get out and try and, and hustle. It's really, really heartwarming to, to see the fans standing out there cheering in the same cold that the student athletes are, are participating in. There's, there's no separation, and there's, there's no difference. For those of you that have been to a cross-country event, very similar to cross-country, only you can't wear shorts. So, just, it was a lot of fun, I want to say thanks to the fans for doing that, certainly to the coaching staff for making that happen. Attended Kennedy just the other...
Attended Kennedy just the other night for show choir. It was a dinner and a show, and the dinner was chili and wild, or wild rice salad, a nice bread, some breadsticks and some lemonade. Anyways, the food was good. It was hot on a cold winter night. Really, really happy to see so many people come and support. That's a big fundraiser for the show choirs. Show choirs are awesome. And the show that my wife and I saw, it was a date night again, the kids knocked it out of the park. So, it's really, really interesting to go and see these and to hear these kids. They put their heart and soul into this, and it really shows. It really, it really comes out. So, not every one of them are excited and anxious to be up in front of people on the stage in front of bright lights, and yet they somehow manage to make it work, and they work together as a team. And I really want to commend them for doing that. Also, had an opportunity to do some listening and learning over at the Bloomington Chamber. Is it Friday? Yeah, Friday. They had a forum with two of our House of Representatives, two members of the House, Paul Rosenthal and Andrew Carlson. The other representative, Linda Slocum, was unable to attend. It's really interesting to hear their thoughts as they pertain, and specifically how relevant they are to what's going on in Bloomington. Director Sorum was there with me and managed to get a couple of questions in. And it's nice to know that my coworkers are out there advocating for adequate, sustainable, and predictable funding. Those three words, we'd like to make sure that they're always mentioned in the same breath as it pertains to funding for our schools, whether it's a local school or a greater Minnesota school. We need that adequate, predictable, and sustainable funding, and it's really fun to watch Jim pepper the people that are up in front of the microphones with questions. So, appreciate the work that Jim did. I ended up being the one that passed out the questions. But that was really interesting, and that's what I have for this evening.
Is there anybody else? Dr. Stagoff?
Just a couple things. I also had a chance to attend the Kennedy Show Choirs, and I just wanted to say especially thank you to all the parents and volunteers that put in all the hours to pull that off because it really is just a great event and great that so many students can participate in the show choirs that we have. You know, I met students from another district that were at a basketball game a couple of years ago when our show choir was rehearsing, and they said, wow, this is so cool. We don't have this. And so, you know, just remember that a lot of places do not have, and we have two high schools with show choirs. So, you know, thank you to all the volunteers that make that happen. I also wanted to mention quickly that I had a chance to go back and visit one of my schools that was, I was assigned to last year, Washburn Elementary, because I wanted to go back and see the remodel since this summer. And everything looked fantastic, but I also just wanted to mention that all of the teachers that I visited with that day were very happy with all the improvements that had been made in their building over the summer. And I did have one staff person also tell me that they were surprised that they actually got done when it did, but they were ready for school to start and couldn't believe they made it. So, I also attended school visit to Olson Elementary, and, you know, spent several hours there, but my highlight of the day was when I went to the media center, we had second graders in the media center learning coding. And I thought, wow, this is amazing that we have second graders already doing coding, isn't it? So that was kind of an exciting highlight for my day there. And I also wanted to mention quickly the MSBA Leadership Conference is this week on Thursday and Friday. And I do believe, I hope Mr. Bennett can help me with this, but I do believe our PTSA is having a breakout session, and Mr. Bennett is also helping with that. Is that, is that correct? I don't know if other school board members are helping, but...
Yeah, it's Heather Starks, the president of our PTSA, is partnering with the president, the state president of the PTA, who's also a school board member in Rochester, and talking about how school boards and parents can work more cooperatively together. I think that's about what it's about.
So, very nice that we have... I'm sorry, what?
Director Kaufman's doing...
Oh, yeah, and Mr. Kaufman is also doing a presentation there. So it's very nice to see Bloomington represented at statewide organization leadership. So, thank you, everyone.
Is there anybody else? Well...
Just a quick comment on that leadership conference. Just a reminder that it's called courageous leadership. That's the theme of the conference. And I'm just really, really looking forward to hear what MSBA has for us, since, you know, some of the big conversations are the future of our students, what it looks like for us in our country and in our state this year.
Is there anybody else? Okay. I attended, I'm the alternate for, I am the alternate board rep to the PTSA council meeting that occurs once a month. I was able to go this month. Two topics that had a lot of conversation was a wellness policy that they're talking about. I didn't hear the beginning of the conversation, but it goes something like, do we continue to use food-based rewards in schools, such as if it's, you know, everybody, you don't have a late slip, so then at the end of the month or whatever, you could have a party where we have cupcakes or pizza or pop or whatever. And so the argument sort of is, well, why is it that we would want to take away all the stuff that kids really like versus why is it that the reward is something that's not healthy? Okay, so, they're trying to balance these two things in creating this wellness policy, and they're getting a lot of feedback from the parents and the different PTAs at the different schools in developing that. The other big thing was the calendar and looking at the two calendar options that were presented at that day. And there was a lot of, it was, it certainly wasn't a one-sided conversation. There were certainly good things, pros and cons to both. I guess, I'm not on the calendar committee, so I would, you know, the feedback that I had was to, when scheduling the conference days, put them in the semester where it makes sense. And that way, if, regardless of if teachers choose to move them to a different day as a building or keep them on the same day, they'll still be in a good spot versus just putting them in a bad spot, hoping then that they'll decide to put them somewhere else. And so I know one of the comments from the high school, or the secondary level, was that there wasn't a conference day, on one of the calendars, there wasn't a conference day in the third trimester. So, that might be something to consider, bring back to the committee, where in elementary it doesn't matter because it's on semester, so it works. There's two days, but on one of the calendars, it would only be one in the first and the second, but not in the third. So that's the end of my update from that meeting, which I believe, we have one more comment?
One more comment, yeah.
Sure.
Before I forget. Something really, really important, just to mention that, you know, the fact that we had this meeting today, that training, equity training today with our Executive Director of Learning Supporters, Mr. Cubas, and with the help of their Office of Educational Equity as well. I just kind of want to highlight the importance of this kind of training as we value professional development for our teachers. We also value it for our school board members. And so, very, very important, very interesting. I think it's, you know, we're just in public to know, we're reading, we're working with this book, Teaching with Poverty in Mind. And so, we started with the first two chapters, and I think that was a wonderful start. So, and just really appreciate the efforts of the school district in helping us educate ourselves a lot more in, you know, how we can better understand our students and help them be successful.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Great, thank you. I have, first, congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair Oliva. I have three reports versus a request for a motion to establish a board retreat on February 15 at 6:00 PM. The meeting is to be held at the Bloomington Chamber offices, and the topic is strategic planning.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation?
Is it 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
On the 16th?
15.
15.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Okay, next is a congratulations to the Kid Safari team for their recent award. Kid Safari was selected by the Sun Newspaper 2017 Reader's Choice for Best Childcare. It is a very impressive award because it is voted upon by the readers of the Sun Newspaper. So congratulations to them. And my third topic is frequently asked questions. As superintendent, I get posed a number of questions. One of the most frequently asked questions is, how is the school board doing? I always frame my response, not talking about the individuals, but talk about them as a team, because they're the constituent team, because they can only speak with one voice. So when I respond, I talk about the five components of any team. The first would be leadership. As evidenced with the transition and the selection for tonight, new chair and the new leadership, unlike so many selections recently, there was no drama, and it went very efficiently. The second would be goals. You heard tonight, the board reported on their goals. They have objective measures, and they report on quarterly, so they talk about formative assessments, and they hold themselves accountable. The third would be, any team needs a plan, and they all take ownership over pathways to graduation plan, and these plans are designed to help them achieve their goals and the goals of the school district. The fourth would be values. You heard, it was one of the goals is to review our values. The board sets, are the leaders. So they set our organizational culture by the values. And if you see the values up there, talk about respect, responsibility, integrity, citizenship, honesty, and teamwork. I think they're displaying all those values and helping shape the culture of our organization. And the fifth component of any successful team is competent team members. And competency in a learning organization is talking about professional development and the professionals, because as you heard tonight, they're having equity training and other types of training to improve themselves and as a team. So congratulations, and thank you for your service. That concludes my report.
Is there any other business to come before the board this evening?
None, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. One more, sir.